Hi, good evening, everyone. To get started the meeting, we're going to do the pledge first.
Shall we pray? Father, we come humbly before you in this day that you have made. We thank you. We thank you for this board, for Nathan and Eric, for Jody, for Mayor Ed Snow, for Richard and for Stephen. We thank you for them. We ask your blessing and favor. Give them wisdom and discernment as they make the important decisions to guide this village. We pray, Father, we thank you for our new mayor. May he, uh, you bless him. May you give him wisdom and discernment as they work together for the better of all the people. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Like I say, I'm glad to be back to everybody that missed it the last couple of years. So, without further ado, we'll get started. I guess we'll do the appointments first. Everybody has a copy of our appointments. They're basically the same, the same committee as last time. And, um, if there's no discussion on that, you can see the motion to approve that.
Can I make that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. The abstracts, uh, I'm, everybody I'm sure has had a chance to take a look at them.
Yep.
If there's no corrections or anything to be made, I need a motion for that as well.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. Thank you. All right, we'll go to department heads. Cedarwood is first. Do you have something to approve on them?
Yeah, they had a couple of issues. Were you gonna do that, Steve?
Steve, you gotta do that for the Cedarwood, but they have what they want.
Oh, yeah. I gotta tell you what they're buying first. There's, there's two items for purchase for the wastewater treatment plant. One is a head gasket and one is a filter for a large piece of equipment in a freestanding building, and both pieces of equipment are necessary and covered by the city. On the motion, we approve that, uh, to purchase that equipment.
Well, happily second, a covered by the city purchase. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Okay, that's carried. Next thing would be Delaware Engineering. Who is, uh, that's Bill. Is Bill, if he has, is he on?
Hey, Bill, you wanna chime in?
Hello, how you doing, everybody?
Hi, Bill.
Hi, Bill.
Oh. Um, so we sent around a handout here, um, the other day. Hopefully folks got a, got a, um, maybe had a chance to take a run through. Not too many new things, just kinda circling back to some ongoing projects. Kinda got a lot of irons in the fire, I guess. Uh, there are two different, on the wastewater side, we have two applications in for, uh, funding for ongoing projects. One with the EFC for funding of a INI study to try to rein our flows in a little better. And a second to replace, um, older equipment at the wastewater plant that's on the village side and has been at the facility since its original, um, construction in the seventies. Those applications have been submitted over the last month or two, and hopefully over the next coming month or two, we get some feedback from the state on those. We do have some ongoing work relative to our speedies permit. Uh, there was a inspection done last fall, uh, by EDC, and they had some, uh, input. They requested one was to conduct a mercury minimization plan and to do a stormwater assessment. Uh, the mercury plan is to ensure that there's no mercury coming from, um, any place in the collection system into the wastewater plant and hopefully getting out to the river. Uh, so that, that plan was prepared and submitted to EDC. Uh, there is an enforcement end of that plan, um, and some outreach to, uh, different, mainly commercial users, uh, the hospital, dentist office, um, industrial users, um, that potentially would have mercury on their facilities. We need to coordinate with Cedarwood and the village voter officer to do some outreach. Um, there's some paperwork along with that, so that's, that's an ongoing, um, work project, whatever you wanna call it. Over the last month, we also submitted a report to New York City DDP to replace some equipment at the sand filter building in the back of the plant, replacing some large valves that really control, um, all the operation of the sand filters. We got some feedback from DDP. They wanted some more justification and documentation, so we're preparing that, to submit that back to them. That's really to do probably a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar capital project at the Seabug Building to replace, you know, twenty-year-old, um, equipment. And that would, if once, if in one April, it would be, um, how the city's in, because it is in the sand filter building. Switching over to the water side, kinda the other end of the fight, starting end of the fight. Uh, we do have a project on the books with EFC to fund replacement of water, uh, water system, infrastructure throughout the village, water mains, upgrades to the water tanks, upgrades to one of the water wells. Has been kinda on hold over the last year with the, the craziness, we'll call it. There has been some traction over the last couple of weeks with EFC, looking to advance that. Uh, the first step is to, you know, get all the rest of our paperwork into EFC so we can close on financing and start designing for that project. And likely be a next year construction. Switching gears a little bit to, I guess, a different end of the fight, um, more on the stormwater side versus water and wastewater. The Third Brook Bridge, replacement of the existing culvert in front of Craft at the intersection of, um, Delaware Street and Westbrook has been on a target for a long, long time. It was one of the original goals of the Flood Commission back when it was formed, ten plus years ago. That's still in the works. That's a, it's a big lift. Um, the, the most recent action has been to apply to CWC to fund the design for replacement of that structure. And as a starting point, it is a project that's recommended in the local flood assessment, which was done by the Flood Commission to identify projects that would help, uh, flooding in Walton. Obviously, working on Water Street was one of the targets in the local flood assessment. Another one is the replacement of the Third Brook Culvert. The idea would be to replace that with a larger span structure to alleviate flooding and backwater events. Initially, CWC tabled that application last year. They wanted to see participation from DOT, being meted as a DOT structure, and DOT is responsible for, for maintenance of that structure and, and maintenance. And DOT, um, indicated that they, uh, support a project to replace their structure, but at this time, they don't have the ability to, um, commit funds to a replacement project. If, uh, if the structure is replaced, they would accept ownership of it, um, if it's done according to their rules and permitted and whatnot, that they were, uh, able to commit any funding from their side at this time. So, based on that, uh, that, that status was reviewed at the Flood Commission meeting this past week. And the discussion with CWC was to resubmit that application to fund design, uh, based on the feedback that we got from DOT. Wasn't really what CWC was looking for as far as, uh, cost sharing with DOT. But they would take ownership of it, and that would come with a, a dollar attached to it. If you want a bridge, over time, it, it costs money to maintain it, so our, our hope or our position is would be that that's DOT's cost share, and hopefully CWC would be able to fund it from that standpoint, so. Uh, we would ask the board consider submission of, or resubmission of the application to CWC to fund design of a replacement structure, uh, at Third Brook. Like I said, an initial application was submitted last year. It's kinda gone back and forth. And we're to the point where, uh, we feel it'd be best to resubmit it with the information we received over the last few months.
So, we need a motion on that, right? Can I have a motion?
Yeah, that would be an application.
The second?
Application that we had, we had prepared, and we'd ask for a signature of the mayor, and then that would be submitted.
Are all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. Okay.
So, we've, we've, we've got a motion for that, so we're, we're definitely, uh, in favor of doing that.
Great. Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, I mean, that's, it's kinda what's next. You know, there's obviously been a lot of work done from a flood standpoint in Walton. It's, it's made a big difference. But even ten or fifteen years into this, it's, it's not done yet, so, um, that's what's next. So, we gotta, I think, keep pushing on it. We, we appreciate that support. Another, I, along those lines, similar but different. Uh, CWC has a separate program called their Stormwater retrofit program. And within that, they can fund assessments, um, in communities to identify projects that would assist, um, the stormwater throughout the community, ultimately to, to reduce the, uh, water colty impacts going to the river. So, if you have a lot of stormwater getting to the river that's muddy and dirty and has contaminants in it, that's not water good for the river, so it's not good for the reservoirs, so it's not good for New York City's water supply. So, CWC has a program to, um, initially do assessments on stormwater systems. Uh, this was, the, the town did one, um, here, I think, two years ago. Uh, initially, the village looked at doing it. It's kinda circled a little bit. Um, there has been a couple of business owners who have, uh, had some discussions with CWC, and CWC kinda reached back out to the village to ask about, um, continuing that process of starting a flood assessment where it would have recommendations for repairs throughout the village, whether it be on village infrastructure or potentially public, uh, private property. Some of our larger parking lots throughout the village, uh, may be benefited by stormwater upgrades. Um, I think the hospital, over the last couple of years, has been a part of this program, um, and, and made some improvements to their facilities with CWC funds. Um, so this would kinda, um, go hand in hand with that, so. I didn't, I don't have a specific motion there. I'm not, you know, saying we have to do something tonight, but it's, it's something that, um, has, has been circling, you know, over the last couple of months. Um, is a potential, um, forward project.
Is, is, is this something that the CWC is going to fund?
Yeah, it's just, they, initially, they would fund a study, um, up to about fifty thousand dollars. There wouldn't be a local match with that. What it is, is you, there's a survey that's done throughout the village, um, to identify all the existing stormwater features within a given area. And, and to use that as a basis to say, all right, these are where the problems are, and these are the areas that would benefit from putting a bigger pipe in or putting a chamber in, or putting more catch basins in, or treatment facilities, or, or whatever it may be, so. It is a CWC-funded study initially, and then that study will, like I said, identify potential projects, and those projects would be eligible for funding under their program. Some of those do have local matches. The initial study is done.
Because, I mean, I'm, I'm all, I'm all for, you know, trying to keep things out of the river that don't belong there, but as far as things washing down toward New York City, I'm less concerned about that than probably New York City is.
Sure. Well, it's, it's, you know, it, it does go hand in hand. I mean, that's, that's their end goal. You know, the, the reason these agencies fund stuff in Walton is because they're mandated to by EPA, um, in lieu of building a massive, massive water treatment facility in New York City. They do things upstate to make the water cleaner that's in the reservoirs, so this is one of those things. You know, there's obviously a number of programs that EP and CWC and the Watershed Act Council and, and all their partners do, um, that have, that do have local benefits. This, you know, is one of them. If a parking lot can be redone and stormwater can be put in and, um, it be repaved at the end of it, that's probably a benefit to a, a private property owner. Or potentially it's a village lot to a village, um, that could be CWC dollars to pay to invest in the infrastructure versus, you know, village or local tax payer dollars. So.
Dual, dual incentive.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's pros and cons, you know, on, on both sides, but, um, you know, the, the stormwater programs, you know, sometimes on our end, you know, we just wanna convey the stormwater and get it off the street, um, which is important on, you know, the regulatory side. You know, they wanna see that, but they also wanna see treatment of it. They don't wanna see all the, you know, any sediment or salt that's on the roadway just be washed directly to a stream. They wanna see treatment. So, that typically, um, involves, you know, things that have maintenance. So, we do have some things in the village that the village maintains. There's, uh, some stormwater chambers in the pool parking lot that have to be maintained on an annual basis, and there's costs associated with those. So, that's, you know, part of the, part of the balance with doing, you know, any of this work is to make sure those, um, pros and cons are, are understood, you know, on the front of it. You know, at this stage, doing a study doesn't, doesn't commit the village to doing anything. It just kinda looks at what the, what options are potentially in front of you. If it's something that is gonna cost a lot of money to maintain, it may not make sense. Um, if that's something that's not gonna cost a lot of money to maintain and can provide benefit to the village taxpayers, then, you know, maybe it's a bigger pro, so. We can, we can look at that for, you know, for, I can give you guys some more information on, on that program, um, and what it's about, and some other samples that have been done in other communities, um, and, and look at it that way. I think that might be helpful for you guys, if that works.
Thank you.
Is that it? You got, no, you got more? Go ahead.
The other, I, I, I don't have anything else to ask for, but just, um, we do have a couple other funding applications that were submitted, um, of two. And one looks like it's gonna go forward is with Delaware County Soil and, Soil and Water Conservation District. Um, again, at the Flood Commission over the last couple of months. Uh, there's a project that, um, is, is needed, and the fairgrounds, um, on the bend of the river at the fairgrounds, there's a slope that's been eroding over time. There's an existing utility pole that's pretty close to the slope. Nice thing, actually just replaced it and moved it back from the bank a few feet. But as that slope continues to encroach, the fairground loses, um, space, and that light pole gets, um, closer and closer to the bank, and that light pole feeds the power in Craft and the chunk of the village, so. An application was put in to Soil and Water last month to look at funding, making, making a repair in that area. And Soil and Water is, is moving that application forward and continuing to review that, that site. So, I think that's, that's an important, um, ongoing project. The last item I have on our list is, is one that's been out there for a little while, is, uh, the highway garage for the Village DPDW. We're looking to tear down and replace, uh, the existing oldest section of the garage. The, um, one that doesn't have leak roof anymore. The village was fortunate, fortunate to get a, a funding award, uh, through Senator Rensker's office. They'll fund probably half the cost of that. I think that's still floating around. I know while the trustees have, in, in the village has been in, in contact with our current senator's office to make sure that's not being lost in this cause, so that, uh, that continues to be, you know, reviewed and, and outreached in the long. That's all I got.
He sponsored, he sponsored a bill to require that, I think it was the Housing Authority that administers the funding to pay, to pay their commitments.
Oh, really?
Being, being, being in the minority, I don't know.
Yeah, how much leverage they have.
Yeah, but.
What I saw was that they were sponsoring, he was sponsoring a bill to require that they, uh, keep their previous promises for, for grant money that had, had already been allocated, allocated before any new grant money is allocated. So, hopefully, our two hundred thousand dollars should still be in the bank.
Okay. Okay, good.
See.
I know, I think the state, knock, knock on what it seems like, the state's close to closing on the budget. I don't know if it's known exactly what's in it or not in it yet, but I think they're close to closing on the budget. When that happens, um, hopefully it advances, you know, stuff like this and a couple of other applications that we have on the silver side, and just kinda keep business and the state moving forward, which is important.
Thank you, Bill.
Other posters are open.
Thanks a lot, Bill.
Yeah, thanks, both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we got the Department of Public Works. We have the report in front of you. Do you have anything you wanna add on to that, Eric, for any chance?
Just some of the highlights. Two guys completed required annual DigSafe training, um, so it's important that we're keeping up on our training responsibilities. Uh, proposed work, cold patch, brush pickup, leak detection, uh, you know, servicing water meter issues, and, uh, getting the dust off the streets. There's quite a bit of it, so. I have this other item to talk about, but, you know, we wanna take care of that now. The banners, the veterans banner.
You can do that really, or just do one way, pull the trustee apart, or?
Yeah. Yeah, wait till the trustee, you can get on that thing. Okay, code enforcement, I, I don't have anything. I don't know if anything brought up or anything. Uh, next thing, Police Department. We'll take a look at that. That's, that's you there, right?
Yeah, pretty selfish.
Yeah, okay. Okay, the next thing, the trustee reports. Well, let's start with the younger and work to the old. Go ahead.
I like the, they, they think I'm the younger.
Okay.
I'm good with that. The, the park is, uh, looking forward to opening up for the summer. We're looking at having all the programs we had last year, with the exception of field hockey was kind of a bust last year, so we're not gonna do field hockey this year. We only had one or two people last year. But we are very much hoping for the return of swimming lessons. And we very much need people to, uh, sign up to be lifeguards and swimming instructors. So, I'd very much like to encourage our, uh, our, our teenagers and our, and our, and our returning college students to, uh, consider, uh, signing up to be lifeguards and swimming instructors at, at the pool this year, because we, we could use your help. Uh, other than that, we intend to have tennis, basketball, arts and crafts. So, we're, 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 we're hoping to get the park, uh, up and going as soon as possible and, uh, to usher in summer. The, the theater, on the other hand, is, you know, it's, it's still closed because of COVID. They're hoping this fall to reopen for concerts if it's possible. And as far as, uh, the movies are concerned, uh, RSS has to deal with their employees. They, they run, they run the movie theater sec- section, and they're trying to make sure that everything is safe and ready, and they're still working on it. So, we, we don't know when the theater's gonna reopen, but we hope as soon as possible. That, that's it for me.
Eric, anything to you?
Uh, so the Hometown Heroes Banner Program that we brought up at the last meeting. Uh, the Ladies Auxiliary is seeking to file a permit that they have with NISIC upon our approval. There's certain stipulations about the banners, you know, no marketing or advertising. But they need to know that the village is on board with, with this endeavor. Depending on who sets them up, I know we don't have the equipment to do that, but the thought is to reach out to the people of the, the Christmas decorations. Maybe, maybe they would be able to lend a hand there, uh, because NISIC requires liability insurance, so.
I was, I was told they have access to, to a bucket truck. I don't know exactly what the details are on that. Because we don't have one.
Yeah, so the, the thought is to put them up for Memorial Day, and they'd be left up until after Veterans Day. But anyway, I guess for their permit purposes.
They would need the approval from the village, if the village is okay with it.
Um, we'll probably have to reach out to the state DOT as well.
Yeah.
Just.
Well, what do you, what do you?
That would require somebody's certificate of insurance, so.
So, do we need a motion to reach out to DOT?
Well, so, we'd have to have, if, if the, if the auxiliary is going to do it, they would have to have insurance. I'm sure they do up there anyway, but they have to have a certificate of insurance. And Jody can reach out to them, find out how they feel about it. But as far as the board goes, it's whatever, whatever the majority of the board wants to do. If someone wants to make a motion, you can make a motion. We'll vote on it and see how it goes from there.
So, I think they all, they are also asking for manpower, be it DVW crew, some of the people on the crew there.
You mean, how many, how many, what are they talking about?
Um, right now, to start, there's just maybe, what, six or eight spots on the bridge.
Just to you.
On the bridge, that's all?
Yeah. And then from then on, the idea, of course, that grows, but just to kick it off, I guess.
Yeah.
So, if, if we wanna have our village crew help with that.
Just put, you mean putting up the bracket?
Yeah.
That's what they, what I'll play.
Where, where are you getting anybody up there?
Huh?
We don't have the equipment.
We don't have anybody, we don't have a bucket truck or anything to get up there.
Linda told me, Linda told me that they have access to a bucket truck. I don't know the details. I was, I've, I've been speaking with Linda Belmont about it.
Well, I, I'm, I'm guessing that we could go along, provided there's a bucket truck that we could, because we're not gonna put anybody at risk of going up there on a ladder, because it's, it's very dangerous on the, right? If, if we can get, if we can show access to a bucket truck, I personally would help out with it. But it all depends on if we can get access to a truck, and so I, I, I guess for that reason, if you wanted to, you can make a motion to do with pending the outcome of getting a bucket truck to be able to do it.
And the insurance certificate?
Insurance certificate.
We gotta reach out to the state as well.
And reach out to the state.
So.
So, we give preliminary, if you want preliminary, okay? Depending on the state, the bucket truck, that.
Yep. Uh, so I'll make that motion depending on, uh, state approval and the bucket truck and our certificate, liability insurance.
Is there a second on that?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Okay, carry. Okay. Anything else, Eric?
Item.
Dick, anything?
Uh, no, the police car is in Syracuse. It should be, I think, back in, what, two weeks, they said, Joey? And we'll have a new car back out. It is, it is marked. We'll be able to see it.
What kind of, what kind of, I, I'm new here, so what kind of, are we getting a?
A Ford.
Explorer or anything?
Same, it's the same as the, the guy who Sheriff Scott in, uh, DPW, they have, or the, the EPS. It looks black. It look like the ones we have. It, it is made for a police car. That is exactly why, so.
Okay.
Very quick.
And the, and the extra car that we have now, they gotta get rid of one of them, correct? Has that been discussed?
No, they're gonna get rid of the Impala. The Chevy.
Which one's the older one? The, the smaller car, right? That's the older one?
Uh, the older one is a Ford, but I don't know if we were gonna get rid of that. It's gonna go to DPW.
Usually it rotates down to the shop car.
It just rotates down, so. It just goes down to Department of Public Works. They will have it. They will get rid of the older cars that they already have.
The older car, yeah, ones that have.
We'll build the older car surplus to sell it off.
And then if there's a problem with one of the other ones in the shop.
The older car will turn into surplus to sell.
Borrow the shop car. It rotates out, the older car goes out.
Okay.
And, uh, yes, we did do the police reform. It was approved on the twenty-third. Mayor signed it, and it was sent ultimately, and they accepted. I haven't heard anything back from them, so I, I guess it's okay.
Something like that, no one loses business. That's a good, believe me, if they had a problem with you, you would've heard right away from them. Is that it for you, Dick?
That's it.
Steven?
I have nothing to report.
That's a good report, Dick. I, I mean, everything's running well.
It is.
Good. All right, uh, item number four is the mayor's report. Well, I'm new here, just stepped in from, even though I'm an old guy, but, uh, I wanted to say I'm glad to be back. Thank you for all those who supported me. Those who didn't, I hope you give me a chance to prove myself again. Uh, I'm here to, like all of you, we serve the taxpayers. That's what we're here for. And if you have any concerns, like last time, write a letter. I'll read it at the meeting, and I will get back to you. I'm also on Facebook. If you wanna send me a message privately, and I'll, I'll answer you. We have our own page now on Facebook. You're allowed to go, you can go there. There's a couple of things, just a few things that I like to bring out, for me personally, that I'm, I'm concerned about. The number one thing is Delaware Street. It's our main street. I mean, it's been like this for quite a long time. We've had floods, we've had banking, we've had the COVID. We have one thing after another that's, that's causes to have an issue. I would like to get together with people on Delaware Street to improve it, to make a, beautify it. I've already spoke to the bank. Wayne Bank is already approaching. I've already spoke to the Chamber. They're willing to work with us. I've already spoke to the hospital. DiCoop up in the hospital, it's, she's willing to sit down and work with us. I've got somebody to be in touch with the artistic community, and I'd like to get ahold of the school and talk to somebody from the art department there. I think that if we all got together and sat down and came up with an idea of what we visualized it could be like, and I was saying, put down something on paper, like an art something, and then we can go out and try and get some money. I know there's money for trees, there's money for other things, but first we gotta couple of plans. But that would be one of the main things that I'm interested in, because anybody comes into Walton, the first thing they do is come down to Delaware. anybody comes into Walton, the first thing they do is come down to Delaware Street, and it kind of looks like we're really that depressed, it looks kind of, I, I'm on the hospital board, and I've had doctors say that they didn't want to come because they were kind of disappointed when they walked down, when they drove down Delaware Street. When you come to the village, we have beautiful homes, so first impressions last of us, I think we need to work together with the owners of buildings as well. And I would ask that some of the owners of the buildings, you can start by please, washing your windows, because you go down there, you see, it's been there for a long time, so I, I would hope that would work with us a little bit. All right, the next thing I was going to talk about, I've already called, left a message with Craft, I want to meet the, the manager down there, I'm waiting for him to call me back. We know that they're going to be, they've been purchased, that it won't probably come through until June, but I want to sit down with him and ask him what his plans are for right now, and let you guys know what's going on with that. Next thing I want to do, we don't have a, a code enforcement officer for twenty hours a week, we need to talk, we're going to have executive session later, I want to sit down and do some interviews with people that we have, and maybe next meeting we pick somebody to be our code enforcement officer. The next thing is the, the old Ball Alley complex, it's been sitting there for years. I was told it was someone who was interested, the mayor Condon had placed a phone call in, nobody called back, so we need to talk about that, if no one's going to get involved, then we maybe should go to real estate and get somebody interested in business down there, because that's a good buil, building, we need to get something going with that. The only other things I can think about, we're already working on the infrastructure, and trying to get some more businesses to commit to Walton. That's, that's the beginner's list, I know there's a lot more we need to do, but if we all work together, I think that we can get some things done. As far, that's all for me. The next thing is the continuation, the Operation Plan Resolution, I, I guess everybody's had a chance to look at that.
Yeah, Eric and I looked on that, there's a resolution.
Yep.
If nobody has any comments or questions, the board needs to go ahead and pass that resolution.
We need a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. That's a good plan, I read it too, it's really good. Is there any Australia?
You skipped over the foreclosure process.
Oh, I didn't try, I had my other thing, sorry, yeah. The fore, the foreclosure process, tax, tax year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty?
Yeah, the first step would be for the board to authorize Merzik to go ahead and send letters out, and that usually tells the property owner that the foreclosure process is going to start, but this is all going to be dependent too on where we are in the state. We might not be able to start this right now, we might have to wait a little bit, but then when it's open and we can do it, we'd be ready to, ready to roll.
There's a federal moratorium too on that, right?
Adjudice, I don't think it's, it's for closure.
Do you need a motion to get this done, right?
I'll make the motion.
Second? Anybody put a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Okay, carry. First time home buyers?
Delaware County submitted a first time home buyer application, number was W four eighty-six, the grant amount would be ten thousand dollars, we just need board approval to move ahead with that.
So move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both?
Aye.
Carry. And the budget amendments? You both seen the budget amendments? Are there any questions on that or discussion regarding that?
I move that we accept the budget amendments.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? That would be carried, I think I got it all right.
I think so.
Yeah.
One thing we did miss at the beginning is getting your name put back on the bank accounts.
Oh, yeah, we need to get my name, to get me authorized, to put my name back on the bank account, so I can sign checks.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
The board needs to approve that.
Motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. Now we need to go into executive session, one of the main things that would be discussion would be the D P W contract.
Make a motion, go into executive session.
Yeah, second, go into executive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone, have a good day.
Thank you.